There was not a lot of. Where they were living in the bar. There were a lot of guys. I couldn't tell what it was that came through there. I saw the silhouette of a decent sized deer. And I could see him a little bit.
Vacation.
Why is this just a vacation? For that swill and the prattle?
I don't think it's wrong to sit right away in the station.
Okay, do you know which ones are on? Do we?
It's like, yes, but they're not listed.
Okay, I've got them listed here, I think. Okay. All right, I'm going to go off. Did you keep me on track? All right, do we have everyone? Okay, better get in here. It is December 10th, 2024. It is 6:33 PM. You are at a comment council of the city of Wausau at City Hall Council Chambers. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance. It's a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk call will roll, please.
Alder Lukens.
Oh, okay. Okay, no proclamations tonight. We are going to take, we've got a guest here as a presentation. We're going to, we're going to bump that one ahead of public comment because we're not sure how long comments will go. So we're going to ask Janice Watson from ECDC to give us an update on the Ethiopian Community Development Council, Inc. And the floor is yours, Janice.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Janice Watson. I am the Executive Director for ECDC Multicultural Community Development Council. We are the Refugee Resettlement Agency here in Wausau. And so I just wanted to give an update as to what's happening at ECDC and maybe just talk about our mission and so on and so forth. So our mission with refugees is to help them resettle within our community, help them to attain self-sufficiency, and integrate successfully into their new community while they're here in the U.S. We have quite a few programs in, with ECDC, we have our Reception and Placement Program. And so this program is for clients who are sent through the State Department. So all the refugees come through the State Department and are then flown from whatever country they're coming from. We serve from clients from all over the world. I'll share where they're coming from. And they come here and while with the RMP program, which is our resettlement and placement program, is we help them with housing, we also help them with employment, we help the children sign up for school, medical, so their, their medical screening, anything they need to do to transition into the community. They work with a case manager for 90 days. So within that 90 days, here, these are some of the things that we do, and also helping with employment. We also have a refugee support service program which can serve, which serves our clients up to five years. So after the 90-day program, they can transition right into this RSS program where they also receive some of the same services, continued help with employment, continued help with other services, so social services, all the things that they need to transition or to continue to be, to thrive within the community. We also have a PCICM program that is called Preferred Communities Intensive Case Management. So we have, we have two case managers who work with clients who come with medical conditions such as, you know, it could be hypertension, really anything that needs extra help and extra care. And we work with Bridge Clinic, so they are our provider when it comes to health in the community where our clients go in, see them within, within the 90 days to make sure they check for their medical. I also want to mention that before anybody comes here, they go through the intense medical process before they come into the United States. There's a bunch of processes that they go through before they come here. Other programs we have, we have the Afghan Assistance Program. Many of our clients are from Afghan, are from Afghanistan. So three years ago, when we started here in, in, in Wausau, a bunch of community people came together to start this program. This was not, and they invited ECDC, one of the leading refugee resettlement agencies, to come here to, to run the program. So this was started, folks recognized what was happening in Afghanistan and wanted to make a difference within our community. And so that's how our clients came. We also have the Ukrainian Assistant Program, which funds, help the clients with all of the things that I mentioned prior. So help them with housing, employment, all the things that we do. And then we have other programs. We have an Employment Engagement Program where we work with employers within our community and I would say within our county and also because we're here in Marathon County, we're also in Portage County, where we assist with, you know, we have many of our clients who do not speak English, so we go in and help with orientation, we go in and help with ELL and so on and so forth. We work with a lot of organizations in our community, all of the social services organizations we work with to make sure our clients are, are getting the services that they need to transition. For English language, we work with New Beginnings for Refugees, we work with the NTC, we also work with McLit and other agencies in Stevens Point area. This year, so just to talk about our numbers, we, throughout the year, we've been doing this for three years. And so in 2022, when we started FY22, our goal was to serve 75 people. We served 130. In FY23, our goal is to serve 75. We served 152. In FY24, that just ended, our goal is to serve 200. We served 196. And I must say that it's not just in Marathon County. We have folks that were in Barron County, Portage County, and also here. And then in FY25, our goal is to serve 235. We've since October, so now we have 40 people that we've already served. Our, the families that we serve are from every, from a lot of places. So I'll give the main, the main places. So Afghanistan, Republic of Congo, Burma. So our Rohingen clients are from Burma. If you don't know, Burma is one of the most prosecuted countries in the entire world. And so many of the clients are in Bangladeshi camps, which has over a million refugees living in those camps. We have folks from Nicaragua, Zimbabwe, Somalia, Syria, and, and other Central African countries. And then we are, we're supported for, from funds through ORR, so this is the Office of Refugee Resettlement. And we're also supported with state funding to help certain of our programs and also local funding. There are way more. I'm, I'm just going to leave it there. If you have questions, feel free.
Thank you. You mentioned the numbers, is that fiscal year? So you're in fiscal year 25 right now?
We're in fiscal year 25, which starts September, I mean, October 1st to September 30th.
Okay. Questions from council members. Alder Killian. All right. Thank you for coming in.
Thank you for having us.
Appreciate it.
Yeah.
All right, up next, we have public, a public comment for those pre-registered. And we are at Sandra Kelch. You're up first, and, and we're looking at three minutes at the podium. Thank you.
So as we know, November, the mayor made a proclamation to make November Homeless Awareness Month. The last day of that month, we lost a member of the homeless community outside, alone, in the cold, on a park bench. I attended a homeless awareness event at the CPC in which people from the state came in and talked about the benefits of housing first, housing first with wraparound services. They condemned criminalizing homelessness. And as I have spoken many times here, criminalizing homelessness and the shelter model alone only increases chronic homelessness. Hypothermia is the leading cause of injury and death for the homeless population. Over 700 human beings lose their lives because of their struggles with homelessness and they freeze to death. A gentle, kind, polite man became one of those statistics in our city. A city where homelessness is increasing and shelter space is decreasing. A city where lifesaving camps are raided and dismantled, removing survival gear from those who need it to survive. There are those who cannot shelter, and this has been spoken at this podium by multiple people over and over and over again. Those with mental illness, disabilities, severe addiction, trauma, and the losers of the lottery at the Catholic charity shelter. Camping bans is another form of criminalizing homelessness, and it's one of the most deadly. Raiding camps and robbing the unhoused of survival gear is handing out a death sentence. It does not end homelessness, it targets the unhoused. Surviving a winter night should not be a privilege, it should be a right, a human right. I am asking you to end the camping ban for the winter months, save the lives of humans who are struggling, prevent lifelong trauma to those officers who have to tear down camps and then find out it resulted in a death. Honor the life of a man who walked so gently on this earth. You all took an oath to, to serve this city, and I'm asking you to do the right thing. Finally, to the family of Garrick Dixon, I personally promise to honor your loved one by doing what I can do to prevent another family from feeling the pain that you're feeling right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Kaylee Wood.
After the recent death of an unhoused man here in Wausau, what I saw play out online was the dehumanization of a member of a specific population. The unhoused population is one of many populations that exemplify our failing systems, discriminatory policies, and stigmatizations of marginalized populations. After talking with a woman from this community, she had stated that, as a direct quote, comments like that that are made directly contribute to losing their mental and emotional stability instead of helping us out. The comments online made after the death seemed to justify his death as if it was seen as a punishment for being unhoused, with his life on display for everybody to take witness to. When the only tool we have is punishment, no problem is going to be solved, and no one is going to learn or grow. We continue to force citizens into these boxes that they do not fit in, and when they can't comply, they are punished again and again, which continues to keep people where they're at instead of pulling them out of their situation. What we need is unconditional housing here in Wausau. That's the only option that is going to work. Most of us have houses that we can go to and we can exercise our free will to do what we want behind closed doors. That should be an equal opportunity for them in a space where they can have access to medical care and counseling or therapy as they choose to do so. With unconditional housing with wrap services, this is a form of harm reduction. We talk a lot about alcohol and substance use disorder when we talk about this population. And harm reduction for a large part equates to safety. And when we talk about alcohol or substance use disorder, a lot of time, the substance or drug or alcohol that they are choosing is the only thing that is keeping them on this earth. And then we sit at our tables and we discuss their trials and tribulations, but for them, this is going to be another story in their book on surviving. And so now everybody is able or ready at certain points of times when we force them to recover or be in sobriety. And that is also a definition that looks different to every person who is struggling with substance or alcohol use disorder. And housing should be a human right, not a privilege. Besides the lack of low-income housing in our community, we are also missing the voices of this population. The Disability Rights Movement coined the phrase quite some time ago, "Nothing About Us Without Us," and this phrase can be used here. We have many good supporting agencies that want to help, but when we look at the rules, funding opportunities, and rhetoric, it conflicts directly with what the desires and needs are of this population. So again, we're forcing people to comply with our standards, which only is going to result in further resentment, failure, and trauma, and then the continued power dynamic that we see play out in our community, both against many agencies, against this community. Online, there were numerous comments saying that they, we cannot help them until they help themselves. If you're not given an equitable opportunity to help yourself, though, how are you supposed to change? Nothing changes if nothing changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Vicki Harness.
I'm going to bring this down a little.
There you go.
My name is Vicki Harness. I'm the Executive Director for the Community Outreach Task Force. We operate the Marty Bus on Wednesdays and Fridays in River Drive. We provide the homeless with survival gear, only to later have it taken away from them. The one thing that it remains consistent is that this population needs a place to go. They need a place to go to the bathroom, they need a place to go rest, they need a place to go be quiet, and they need a place to go sleep. There are some beds available, but not enough. There are some places that are available that some can't go because they can't be in a crowd and they need to be alone. So they need a place to be able to go, be alone. They need a place to sleep alone. Please keep that in mind and let us all help them find a place to go. And I want this body to know that the Community Outreach Task Force is looking for that place, and we will not stop till we find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Matt Barnes, Chief of Police, 515 Grand Avenue. Although this isn't on the agenda tonight since we have public comment, I think it's important that I acknowledge that any citizen can come up here and provide public comment and share with you what they think. I thought it was interesting in one of the comments where we talked about what people are saying on social media. And, and there was also a comment about how something might impact our officers. And what's important about that is facts matter. And so in this particular case, we suffered a tragedy in this community. We had a death. We had an individual that by the preliminary investigation died of exposure on Thanksgiving afternoon and was found the following Saturday. And that's when they were recovered. But some of the things that matter in this case are, number one, through social media commentary, one would suggest that this individual was not capable of sheltering at the Warming Center. And so a fact is, in the previous year, he sheltered at the Warming Center 129 times. So I would suggest to you that he was capable of sheltering there. Both on Thanksgiving night and the following night and the night following that, our shelter was not at capacity. So there was space and nobody was turned away. And also, you know, when I became a police officer and I became the chief, I didn't take an oath that had anything to do with encampments. I didn't take an oath that had anything to do with the homeless population. What I took an oath for was to support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the state of Wisconsin. And whether you are an unhoused individual in our community or a housed individual in our community, you have constitutional rights. We cannot force you to shelter. We cannot force you to stay in your encampment. We can't force you to stay sober. And every single staff member at the police department is going to defend the rights of individuals even when we don't agree with their decisions. In this particular case, it's unfortunate that an encampment owned by this individual, which was not raided by the police department, because as a matter of fact, in the month prior to Thanksgiving, two encampments were dismantled with a 14 days notice and working with the population. That is all that was removed by Wausau Police Department and Parks Department staff. This individual, we did dismantle his encampment that included sleeping bags, blankets, and all those things necessary to keep him warm throughout the evening. But he chose not to do that. And we don't have the right to force anybody to do what we think they should do. As a matter of fact, facts of this case are, this individual had enough money on his person that he could have got a hotel room that night if he chose to. But we can't force him to do that. And so the impact on our officers is when social media is utilized to discuss what's in their best interest or what they did or didn't do, when the facts are misused to justify a conclusion. And that really impacts my staff. So I just wanted to share with you, it's an unfortunate situation. When individuals are unhoused and slept outside, I think it is a fact that their lives are shortened. You do not live the healthy life that you do otherwise. And it is not a good thing for our officers. It's not a good, it's not something they want to deal with, but that is a fact, and these are the facts of this tragedy, and I wanted to share those with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Thank you, Tom Killian, 133 East Thomas Street. I had not planned on giving comments, but it seemed appropriate after the last round. So yes, facts matter. And let's look at some of those facts. I'm not a scientist or a medical professional, but you tell me, let's look at the facts. In our freezing winter, do you have a better chance surviving outside in a tent with a sleeping bag, or does your probability of survival go down if that is removed? And I'm not talking about just this instance, I'm talking about in general. And, and guess what the answer is invariably? The answer is you have a better chance. So any alternative version of that is not fact. That is what you would call magical thinking. Okay? The other thing is, and let's make clear, we talk about alcohol and drugs, that's a rhetorical sleight of hand. Alcohol is a drug. Those were segmented years ago so that people, often more affluent, could feel better about their consumption of their drug of choice. But you know who gets shamed in town in Wisconsin for alcoholism? Those who are impoverished, those without a home. How many people in this room worth a few hundred thousand or in the city, a million, are alcoholics? I'll tell you, quite a few in this city, right? But the ones who get shamed are the impoverished ones. And where's the county? Let's talk about facts. The fact is, they have a statutory responsibility to be providing sufficient drug and alcohol treatment programs. They do not. And I've heard from people both in government and from outside of government, some who vocally are very clear about their so-called religious beliefs that we should not be providing more assistance because that will bring more people who need said assistance. Is that a Christian belief? Did Jesus say, "I'm not going to heal the blind man because more blind men may come to town"? Absolutely not. So let's dispatch with the magical thinking and the hypocrisy. And the fact of the matter is, Ms. Kelch was correct that in the winter, a no camping ordinance in the freezing cold when there are not sufficient beds, that is a death sentence. And yes, you'll find plenty of articles throughout the nation where people have died camping outside, but those are not the same situation. So let's listen to fact and let's let humanity guide the decisions of city leadership and, and do service. I thought the goal of the police was to protect and serve. Let's start doing that. And, and don't give the police functions that are not police functions to begin with. Thank you.
Thank you. Consent agenda is up next. We have several items that we are going to pull. First, the item is 241203. It's a finance resolution on the lead service line replacement. That'll just be moved down into normal resolutions and ordinances, so it's coming off of the consent. The other item coming off of consent is 241204. That's a finance resolution. It's going to require a minor modification that Mike Martins will walk us through. It's a resolution on the purchase order to CCITC for an ERP project. And there's one more.
12, 2412.
241210. It's a motion, or it's a resolution approving North River Development Guide from Economic Development. That too will be moved to the normal resolutions. Anything else? All right. Seeing none, we, I would, we need a motion to approve consent agenda as modified with those three items coming down. Motion from Watson, second from Rasmussen. Without objection, we will, ready to vote.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 0.
So we'll take them in order. The first item is file number 241203. It's motion, it's a resolution from finance declaring official intent to reimburse expenditures from the Safe Drinking Water Revolving Loan Program for the BIL's fiscal year 25 Lead Service Line Program in year 2025. We do have representatives from CIP here in case we want to ask some questions. So I would enter, we have a motion from Henke, second from Larson. And I just want to, you know, the reason we're pulling this is to get a little more discussion. This is really a continuation or an affirmation of, of previous councils' commitment and contract with CIP to do this. And, and we had discussed, we would bring this back year over year. And we had discussed, we would bring this back year over year. Take a look, so we're going to get a-- this is our window at this point to affirm this again. So Mr. Lindman.
Yeah, I'm here for any discussion, questions, or anything that you have with regards to this. Just to kind of preface this, with all of our loans that we have with the DNR, whether that's Safe Drinking Water, which this is, or the Clean Water Fund Loan, we typically go through this process on a reimbursement resolution. In this instance, it's twofold. One, it acknowledges the fact that the city is willing to take on this loan, both the loan and the principal forgiveness. And also, it allows us to get reimbursed when we start incurring expenses for the work prior to that loan being closed. So.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. My understanding was, from the report that we had just received from CIP a couple meetings ago, was that not only did this program meet its goal, it exceeded its goal in the number of lead service lines that they were able to pull during the season that we have. I've actually talked with a number of community members who've had that work done. And one of the things that I know that we wanted to know year by year was, first, how it went. Second, how did people feel about the work? How were they treated? Was the property restored properly? Was the process orderly? And what I've heard from the folks I've asked that I knew had the work done, all of those comments were positive. Like, people felt really good about the work that got done. Obviously, the private side was funded by the program. They did not incur costs on their own. And, you know, the fact that they were able to pull, I think, more than 100 extra lines beyond what that goal was, I think really speaks to the program. I think also included in that report was the news bite that it's expected that we will be funded for 2025, you know, beyond what we even had expected. I think that us getting in on this program on the ground floor was very helpful to us as a community. We know that communities countrywide are grappling with the same type of issue with the change in administration that's coming. We don't know what that cycle looks like for 2026, but we do know what it looks like for 2025. And so I think for us to get as much of this work done as we can do, it really is a sound decision for us to push forward on the 2025, and hopefully they can exceed that goal as well. That goal was substantially larger for year two, but I think that they demonstrated that they did have the capacity to deliver on those promises this first year. So I am excited to support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Tierney.
Thank you. Eric, just a couple questions for you. How much debt did the city incur that wasn't covered by the programs? Did we-- that goes to the levy for 2024?
Yeah, about, I think, 2.2 million. Yep.
Okay. And what's expected for 2025?
6.1 million.
Okay.
Yep.
And do we have a plan on how that's going to be taken care of?
We do have options on that. We'll be bringing forward coming in January after some further conversations with Ellers, you know? But there are different funding avenues for the debt service, which I think this council will have to decide on as we move forward. And some of the best options that Ellers will be helping us out prepare.
Okay, so you don't have anything that tells us more about that at this point?
The only thing I can say is that for '25, the debt can be retired through TIDS, general obligation, the water utility. So there's, you know, and then just kind of like what that looks like. I don't have those details, you know? I'll rely on our financial advisors to provide the best way to do that. Yep. For the 2024, we can't use water utility because those were all private side services.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So that would have to be TID or general obligation debt. Yep.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
It is a good question, though, because it is-- we have to face it head-on and come up with those options. Alder Killian.
Yeah, Eric, has the DNR approved the contract yet that's?
Yeah, there was some additional language that they wanted, not only from the CIP contract in the agreement, but also from some of the subs as well. They wanted further detail on the work that was being performed specifically, you know, CIP. It's in the DNR's hands right now. Yeah.
But their approval is fairly important for payment of these bills, correct?
Well, correct, yeah. I mean, they haven't established a loan closing for us yet because of that. They've approved like, you know, really everything except the final language within the agreement for CIP. So all the construction contracts, things like that. Yeah. Yep.
I noticed in the packet, it says this will be paid for by grants and forgivable loans. What forgivable loans do we have in place? Any?
It'll be forgivable loans and loans. That's what the DNR provides us.
Okay. So there are specific options for forgivable loans at this point? We know we're going to have some forgivable loans?
Yeah, so the, for 2025, the breakout was about 8.8 million in forgivable and 6.1 in loan.
I think it's the 6.1 that concerns me.
Sure. Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
So I understand that the 2024 debt isn't paid yet, and I have concerns about paying the debt for 2025. So I just wondered what specific plans we have. And from what you're saying, there really are no specific plans at this point, correct?
Correct, yeah. We have ideas on how that debt will be paid, but the specifics will be coming, you know, starting in January for the council to make those decisions.
And based on what Alder Rasmussen said, in addition to my concerns about the payment, I do want to compliment CIP on the work they've done because I've heard some very positive things about them in the community as well. So thank you.
Good.
Alder Gisselman.
Since we don't have-- it bothers me that we're sort of looking at $6 million. And with regard to the budget that we went through this year, there will be debt. We will have to, and not only the six, whatever percentages of the 6 million we'll have to borrow for, we will also lining up for 2027, which was most likely even be more, and trying to figure out plans for that. You know, and I know that this is something the city has to do, but we are, I think, challenged every year by the debt that we are facing. And I-- and by the debt that we have to pay for this, we can't have something else. And every year, we go through CIP drawing a line. The line's going to get higher on the chart every year because we just can't afford the further debt. And the debt is increasing. I think the city has to, in some way, develop a plan. And I'm not sure what that plan is, but I think we have to take a look at the larger issue of lead service lines in this city. I am hesitant at this point to commit the debt that really we have no plans for. And I really think that, I think we owe the citizens a little bit finer of an answer with regard to how we're going to pay for this and what we're going to not pay for, not only in 2025 and in 2026, as we go forth into the lead service lines in this community. I think we have to have a plan for that. I'm not sure that this is the right one. Thank you.
Thank you. Just a reminder, there are eight Alders on the council that were here when this was passed, and I think six of the current Alders did approve this. So we were shooting some darts, because we don't know year to year what's coming. But you are correct, we do have to address it.
Can I?
Sure.
Well, you're right. When we passed it last year, we knew that there was some debt, some-- but now we're seeing the possibility of $6 million. And with no-- with hesitancy with going further. Yes, I believe I voted for it last year, but I think I had some questions with regard to the funding as we are going forth. Now, one year later, we see $6 million. And I question it again with regard to how we are really going to-- I don't question the work done, you know, there's a lot of other issues with that. I question our fiscal responsibility going forth with regard to how we're going to pay for it and drawing the line, because we had to draw the line this year with regard to the budget. How are we going to draw the line next year? The city council next year will have to deal with it. It's another, it's a big issue this year, and that's my concern.
Thank you. Alder Tierney, I'm sorry if I stepped on you, I didn't see you there. Go ahead.
That's okay. And again, my concern is not only the $6 million, but the money this year. I think there needs to be a specific plan, and I think we need to hear that plan from Ellers first before we can say, "Let's move forward." Because again, we-- I do not question lead service line replacement. I think everybody deserves to be able to have safe drinking water. So, I mean, I'm not talking at all about, "Do we need to do this project?" But do we need to do this project in five years? Do we need to slam this out that fast? And I know that previously you had said that now that there's more communities on the bandwagon and more communities going after this financing, that will probably go down in the future years. So then how do we pay for it when it's going to be even more debt than, say, this year when the opportunity for more financing is there? So I have some real concerns, not only about the $6 million from this year and the-- or should I say 2025? The debt that was incurred in 2024 and what will most evidently become even more debt next year if the financing available, the grants available, are going to be split between more communities. So I think we have to hear from Ellers, and then we have to consider maybe putting the brakes on how many we have, I guess, targeted for 2025. Thank you.
Yeah, I think the challenge with that is that, you know, right now, we had a, you know, very positive breakdown for 2025, right? So putting the brakes on at this point would basically have us give up that principal forgiveness or a piece of it, right? So, and I think the idea is, is that, you know, as long as the contributions, right? And even when we brought the ordinance forward, you know, the council was pretty much together on the fact that they wanted the ordinance, and that hasn't not been adopted by you, but that it included language that as long as there wasn't a cost to the residents, right, for their side. And so this funding that we're getting for '25 covers the private side 100%. It's all principal forgiveness, right? It's the public side. We even got some principal forgiveness for the public side, which we did not expect. And so we did very well on funding this year. And I think next year, I would agree with you, I don't think we're going to do as well in subsequent years as well. So it would be my recommendation that we move forward, you know, while we get this good split right now with the principal forgiveness, because it's well over 50%. Yeah.
And I know where you're coming from, but I think it's still going to be a hard sell to the community of Wassa, who has been very vocal in how they want to see debt reduction.
I, yeah, and I completely understand that. And I think, you know, I agree with you. I think that, you know, we will bring back, you know, the ideas for you to decide on and how this debt will be paid. But again, you know, it is challenging when we're working with the state DNR, right? We expected the funding list to come out in early September. It didn't come out till late October. So that's why this is coming late, right? And so it does become a challenge for us as well, because with trying to do 1,900 service lines in '25, now is the time that we have to get going. We just had a meeting this morning, too, with a lot of the players in this, to go over, you know, improvements and how we're going to do the scheduling and future meetings to keep this moving forward. Yeah, so, but I understand what you're saying, Vicki, for sure. Yep.
Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I do think that we are right now in a cycle where we need to capture a flow of federal dollars that's flowing to us through the bipartisan infrastructure bill, through the DNR. We know that that is a competitive and perhaps waning fund source for us. And so when we are in a position where we can recover that much debt forgiveness, we don't have 30 years to complete this work anymore. And so I think that, you know, I think it's important that Eric pointed out that a lot of the non-forgivable costs of this are in the public side. It's our lines that are in our streets. They're not the stuff that are in people's basements and in their front lawns. That stuff we're taking care of for the residents. The other trouble we have is that this stuff exists in the oldest neighborhoods in our city. And oftentimes, those are in economically disadvantaged neighborhoods. And, you know, those same neighborhoods expect that we will pay attention to their needs at least as much or more than we pay attention to, you know, the needs of communities that don't have these similar struggles. And so, you know, there's an awful lot of talk that happens about investments we make and borrowing we take out to spend money on things that, you know, some people feel are frivolous and unnecessary. Safe water isn't that. And so even if Ellers brings us three or four different funding options to consider, Finance Committee will obviously consider all of those and make a recommendation that they feel is reasonable. But I feel like we need to get as much of this work done in the next year or two as we possibly can. Because of a lack of federal funding causes all of this to slow down. That mitigates the impact that we can make for our residents. And, you know, this need isn't going away. These folks living in these homes have had this need for forever. So, you know, I think while we are able to capture this stuff, we're in on the front end of this. I think we need to push to get as much of it done as we can achieve. You know, I hope it is 1,900. I hope it's 2,000 for next year. But, you know, like we said, we need to get moving and have a plan for the logistics, too. I also don't think we have the luxury of waiting, you know, three, four months to make the decision and then expecting to mobilize workforce when the frost is out. So I think we have to get going. Thank you.
Thank you. You know, and I think that was the dice we rolled two years ago when we entered into this, just to capture as much of the grant funding that's available. The pinch we're in is now we're getting the grant, but we also, we're tight. We're tight. So we need to be aware that 6 to 8 million is coming onto our debt load. And even at 0%, 20 years, that's 400,000 to the debt, I mean, to our debt service. So, you know, I think it was, it was a good idea to try to capture as much of that as we can, but the council needs to be aware that that's part of it. The ordinance has to be addressed again potentially. Things may change next year, and we'll have to have the ordinance adjusted. So if funding is different, we can't, we're not guaranteed the same funding year over year. So that's why we were talking about it. We have that short window to prep for next year. And once we get going, we don't want to go back and regret that we made this decision. Further comments? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion from Henke, second from Larson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 6 to 4.
Thank you.
All right, up next was a consent agenda item that we moved down. It's 241204. It's a finance resolution authorizing, authorization to execute purchase order with CCITC to complete the ERP project in the amount of 163,875 and execute contracts for services on behalf of the city. I have a motion from Watson, second from Larson, and this one's going to require a potential amendment. Alder Martins.
Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. In looking at the resolution here, we do need to make a small change, and I believe there was, there should have been a sheet passed out to you, but in the, this is something that came up to finance that the auditor has recommended that we do in that now it therefore be resolved by the common council, the city of Wausau, that the proper city official, what we need to change is the verbiage so that it says the proper city officials are hereby authorized to enter into a contract with, and then city coney, information technology, instead of the word purchase order, we want to change that verbiage to contract. So I guess I'll just hit my amend button here.
Standby.
There we go.
And if I could just add, this may be in the form of an interagency agreement. And I talked to Ann and she said that is a contract, so it could have a title, interagency agreement, but that constitutes a contract.
That's still, that's still designated, it has a contract.
Yes, just for that additional clarification and if that could be included in the minutes, that'd be great.
Not sure why there's a timer there. Not sure why it's showing a timer. Just three minutes. We only, oh, we have a motion, a second amendment. Just gonna copy.
Mr. Martins, do you have the actual adjustment that you made there?
I got the paper copy here.
So I have a motion to amend, to adjust the therefore be resolved language to read, to read, to enter into a contract instead of to execute a purchase order with CCI TC.
Okay. Does anyone have that on their agenda right now?
Yes.
Okay, so we have that amended motion from Martins. We're voting on the motion, or on the amendment, second from Rasmussen. All clear on that?
You may begin voting on the amendment. Motion to amend passes 10 to 0.
Okay, so then the main motion as amended is that 241204. And I don't know who the original motion was. I think it was, stand by. Watson, second Larson. Comments on this? Seeing none, oh, Mr. Martins.
Yeah, I just wanted to pipe in here. You know, the reason why we're doing this, this resolution with CCI TC is that we're getting down to the bitter end of our ARPA allocation funds, and the best practices is to over encumber ourselves with spending requests because we have, we still have until the end of '26 to spend the money, but we have to allocate the money before the end of this year. So that's why we need to execute this contract with CCI TC before the end of the year so that we can, if any other projects don't use all of the, all of our funding, this can be used to spend down any of that leftover, those leftover ARPA dollars so we don't leave anything on the table.
Thank you, Mr. Martins. Seeing no further questions.
You may begin voting on the motion as amended. Motion passes 10 to 0.
Okay, and the last polled item we had was 24, file number 241210, resolution from Economic Development approving North Riverfront Development Guide. And this is a guide put forth by Andrew and Randy.
Can I ask Andrew to come?
And we had a question from, do you have a?
No, I just wanted to.
Sure thing.
Alder Killian.
Okay. When the guide for development was explained to the ED committee, we had to have an explanation of what a guide for development was because it was something that was kind of new for us. So I had a couple of questions from residents, what's a guide for development? And I'm going to provide what I learned from Andrew, and then if Andrew has anything additional to ask, to add to that, it would be appreciated. When the guide was presented by the ED department, we were told that there would probably be no action taken on this development until around 2027. That this guide was essentially twofold. First, the guide was not to elicit RFPs, but to protect the city from development deals in the area which do not meet the city's vision for the area. And second, we wanted to satisfy terms of a development agreement, at least in spirit, which we have with the Woodshucks. So since this is not going to promote any action or RFPs, I will support the guide, but I did want the residents to understand the purpose of this. So Andrew, if you have anything to add?
I think you're the expert now, Alder Killian. You explained it very well.
Okay, well, I just wanted the residents to be aware of what that was.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
We had, so just for the record, we have a motion from Hanky, second from Neil. Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I guess, so just to clarify then, my understanding was that the guide would eventually be replaced by a master plan once one is eventually developed. Is that?
That is correct.
So this is kind of a stopgap in between because right now we don't have a formal plan. We do have a vision for what we want to see there in terms of growth, right? So.
That is correct. The guide kind of provides a vision and, you know, a couple tasks that the city can do in the meantime to further prepare the area, whether it's rezoning or trying to acquire a little bit more right of way or something.
Sure, okay, makes sense. Thanks.
Seeing no further questions.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to 0.
All right, we whipped through the consent agenda in 58 minutes. We're on to standard resolutions that don't have any appointments tonight. Up first is file number 231109 AD. It's a finance resolution approving and adopting the budget for American Rescue Plan Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Fund-funded projects for mortar pool rolling stock purchases. We have a motion from Tierney, second from Hanky. Seeing no questions, that passed Finance 5 to 0.
You may begin voting. Yeah, you want to, you want to vote yes? Motion passes 10 to 0.
Up next, file 24-1212. It's a plan ordinance to rezone 70804, 806, 810, 814, 816 Grand Avenue from Urban Mixed Use UMU Zoning District to Planned Unit Development PUD Zoning District and approve the general development plan for a 50-unit apartment building. That passed 5 to 0 from plans. I have a motion from Watson, second from Rasmussen. Alder Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Actually, it was passed 5 to 1.
5 to 1, is that what I said?
I was, I was the dissenting vote.
Okay.
I went, when I first looked at this, I voted for it. I voted for it on IMF, on infrastructure and facilities. As I travel throughout the city and the more I think of this, I, as much as I love, would love to see more affordable slash workforce housing in this city, I can't support this project where, simply because where it's, where it's going. As I travel through the city, I see the ongoing developments that are going on now, and I urge my colleagues to do so as well. And I take for an example, first of all, the one going in the mall development. I see, you know, dirt, piles of dirt all over the place. I see, I see sub-assemblies laying around and stuff, and, and it's good. It's a work in progress and it's, and it's working very well. It's going up quickly. I go over by Gorman where they're building that, that piece, that affordable housing on First and Sherman or Stewart. And but, and I also noticed that they also have two lanes of traffic closed, you know, a straight lane and a turny lane, and I also witnessed, you know, semi-tractors in there and loading building materials and such. And I also noticed that across the way that, you know, they have dumpsters there for their garbage and they have their, their building supplies laying there and such. And when I look at that, I look and, you know, they can't do that on a lot that, on a corner of Grand and Thomas. There is no place for, you can't close down a lane of traffic for, for construction, you know, purposes. I witnessed, I don't know if it was this year or last year, when they, when they closed that intersection to rebuild it or repair it, the chaos it caused. I have, in my district alone, I have many constituents that, that work and live in my district that need this intersection to be open at all times. You know, I see the need for emergency vehicles to get through this intersection at all times. You know, and I see, you know, if this is going to take a year and a half, two years to construct, I can see where it's, it's, you know, yeah, they could probably put their stuff across the street on the land we bought for the so-called fire station or, or up the street at the county lot, but that's still, you're going to be dragging that stuff up and down the street and you're going to be causing problems with traffic. I, I also, I don't, looking at the packet, I see they're proposing 44 underground spots and 30 above-ground spots. Well, for a 50-unit apartment building, I'm guessing you probably need a car and a half per unit. So you're, you're looking all of a sudden at, at 75 parking spots. Well, they're giving you the bare minimum of 74. So that would be, if I would be living in this apartment building and I wanted to have my buddies over to play cards or my family over for a Christmas dinner or something, they'd probably have to take the Uber or something because there'd be no place for them to park. You know, I also see in the packet that the city's looking at ignoring the setback rules that they have for this building. And I just, you know, I see they have an entrance and an exit for both Grand and Thomas Street. I just don't see this as being a very safe place to put this building in there for, as much as I would like to see it, I say put it up the street where the, you know, put it someplace else. The city has plenty of land where they could put a project like this, but I'm not going to support putting this in this piece of property. Thank you.
Thank you, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. You know, I think it's important to recognize that this zoning change, and my understanding is that this is the general development plan. There's additional phases of this as this comes together. I think the next phase is a precise implementation plan where we articulate more about site, site access, egress and ingress, landscaping, things like that. So there's more than one vote that happens here. This is a general concept plan, certainly not the final, but what I do want to remind us is that this is 50 affordable units that this community is desperate for. And we have talked over and over again about how we have such a terrible shortage of affordable units. The Wida Litec credits that this project got took two years to get, and that was two years too long, but those credits are site-specific. In the early stages of this, we had looked at and talked about, is there another site we could give them for this project? And the answer was no, because the award that they got was specific to this plan on this site. And you can't just take those credits and pick them up and plop them down on a different site. So if this doesn't go, we add a minimum of two more years without those 50 units. Like, we've got to get this done. And, you know, there are other building projects and building sites where construction, logistics, and material storage are a problem, but that does get worked out. And so, you know, if I were a bedding person, I would say that there's probably an option for material storage on the floral property if it's needed while this is going up. I think there could be a condition put on the permitting for the excavation and the build that the Grand and Thomas intersection needs to remain open. Like, there's, there's ways that the city can manage construction so that we don't have long-term traffic flow problems when something is going up. Somehow 500 grand got built, and it's the same thing in the same spot across the street. So I think, I get that we're worried about that, but I also think that we have got to go forward or we are just not going to have a product that we can deliver to the community. And the need is getting worse and we need to be delivering on those units. So I will support this one. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Killian.
I agree with Lisa Rasmussen that we desperately need the affordable housing, but I was one who voted against the development, and I did so because I have heard from so many people about their concerns about safety on that corner. So I, that is not something that I'm going to support. We gave up almost a half a million dollars from the DOT for that, and we have safety concerns, so this is not an issue that I can support.
Thank you. It looks like either Andy or Randy will come up here. We do have another step to this, and that would be the specific plus the developers' agreement. But points taken, could you explain at what point we're at here?
Yeah, so this is the approval of the general development plan, and thank you for the opportunity. To Alder Larson's point, I just want to talk about size of these parcels. So the project that West Side Commons is on, that acreage for that triangular parcel is .77 acres, so almost three quarters of an acre. Project we're looking at 700 grand is 1.15 acres. With the other project, the .77, they're utilizing that other triangular piece for parking as well. That's why you kind of see that part, or the construction site taking up both those spaces. There'll be more room on this site. This is 50 units compared to 54, really nominal in the big picture. But what they're able to do with the addition of that 20-foot-along grand that they're not going to be in, it won't be up as tight to the road as what you're seeing on that other site. So as part of the process for this, this is one step in it. Next, they would come back with their specific improvement plan. That'll come back through Plan Commission. We're still in negotiations for development agreement. That'll go through economic development as well as financing onto you. Happy to answer any more questions as you have. Also, we do have the developers here. Tyler's here if you have any questions.
I do, I just want to answer one more of the questions on the vacation of the property. I don't think we turn our back on that piece if something were to happen down the road here.
Correct. So what happened at Plan Commission with that, which shows that we'll hold on to that piece before we make a final decision, we'll hold that till the development agreement takes place. So that'll be coming forward to council whenever that happens, hopefully sometime in February or so.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further questions?
You may begin voting. Motion passes seven to three.
So as Mr. Fifer again mentioned, that will be coming back to us with the other components and that, I think it was 420,000 vacation opportunity. All right, up next is the pilot. Two-three-dash-one-one-two-one, Finance Resolution Establishing the 2025 Property Tax Equivalent for the Wausau Water Works. This passed three to two in Finance, and I would like to say something on this to set this up. You know, we had a committee of the whole put together to talk about whether we could reduce the pilot or not, and it was something I really wanted to do. We took a different approach as we discovered the so-called PSC, the Public Service Commission math, where we have reserves to build up, and if we don't have those and we do a rate case, we could potentially have to increase our rates. We don't want to do that. So we made a decision to buy, the other factor that was going on at the water works is if we're putting this money toward water works, projects, and items like water meters, so we put a million dollars into water meters to help recover that 17% lost billing that we've got. We're on a pretty fast pace. Hopefully, we're going to get about 4,000 done next year, and every single lead service line replacement, we'll be getting a new meter, so we'll be charging appropriately. So I guess in theory, that pilot payment is essentially offsetting some costs that maybe allow us to look at it a little closer next year. But certainly, it's here for your decision. We have a motion from Hanky and second from Watson. Alder Killian.
Just one question. I understand about the payment for the water meters. I know that was an important issue and why we are where we are with the water utility payment right now, but at what point in time does the city anticipate that that pilot payment can, we can look at decreasing that payment after a year, or, you know, what are the thoughts here with that pilot payment? Are there any?
So, after the meeting that we had in August, the goal was after the end of this year that we would reevaluate where the water utility was, because we'd have an entire year of financial data, and then look at it at that point. The pilot currently is, the formula for the pilot is governed by the PSC, and so it's based on the assets in service and inventory in place at the first of the year each year, just like when the assessor comes and looks at your property for valuation, they're always looking at that January one day. So based on the continued improvements that we're making, now we have the GAC improvements with the purchases of meters and the meters that are in inventory, we would expect pilot to actually continue to increase over time because of that continued investment. And if council does not adopt a resolution to change that from the calculated method, then that's the amount that we have to charge the water utilities based on that PSC calculation. So if you, so I would expect that we will have to have a resolution every year going forward until you want to go back to the regular formula. Now, once we've provided Ellers with the 2024 activity, they'll be able to look at that and determine whether the utility could go for a rate adjustment and see a decrease. Obviously, like the lead service line that we just talked about in an earlier item, again, is going to put pressure on the utility rate. So, you know, it's not something that we can look at individually. It has to be looked at comprehensively with all of the utility's activities and functions. Also, we're looking at our taxpayers and how they can afford that loss of another revenue source. So that pilot payment goes to the general fund and helps us defray our costs for providing services, whether it be for police services, fire services, DPW services, they all, it all goes down, right down to the bottom line, so that we can charge less for real estate taxes. And so when we looked at that presentation, it was, well, even if you would forgive a portion of it, you're not going to be able to decrease your rates currently based on the information that Ellers had, but if we reduce it, we would probably have to increase taxes. So at that point, it seemed like staying with the level of forgiveness that we have was the right approach. So once we've met with Ellers, we can go through that whole exercise again and evaluate it with the Finance Committee and the Commission. You know, the Commission, I think, is more from an informational basis, because the forgiveness has to be by council, not the Water Utility Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Martins.
And I think just to amplify a couple of points that both the mayor and Mayor Beth Brad, Mary, Mary Ann Bruff, or sorry, is that, you know, it's, we've, for the pilot, we are taking the same amount of pilot payment that we took this last year. So we didn't, we didn't increase, we didn't reduce it, but in exchange, we are funding the water utility with a combined $1.8 million in allowing them to purchase new water meter heads, 800,000 through ARPA and a million from city's reserves. So in the, in the goal for the utility to be able to accurately track consumption and billing will allow the utility to stand on its own feet. The, the GAC system, the guarnited active carbon system comes online, or just came online, this year, this month, and what the, that asset has not been, we haven't, the Public Service Commission does not take that asset into account in its rate cases until it is actually functional, then, and at that point, it could be capitalized and a part of the rate case structure. So I think, you know, with, with the last parts of the water utility plant coming online, with what we've done to help support the water utility through the purchase of the meters, through however many millions of dollars we've provided it through ARPA funding the last two years, is, you know, what, you know, the things that we can do to make it a stronger, you know, a stronger entity for an exchange of not, you know, changing our pilot structure again for one more year, I think is a good, a good exchange to make, and I will be supporting this.
Thank you. Well, at risk of entering some controversy, I, it's always been counterintuitive to me that we can't reduce the pilot and at least, very, very least, offset any upward pressure, and we certainly aren't going to be popular asking for a rate increase. So, you know, I think, to answer your question, I am, I think we made a good gesture move to put this money into the water utility with meters, but I think you owe to your constituents to have a healthy debate as we go forward on, on what's the best philosophy on, on the pilot. Seeing no further comments?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to zero.
Thank you. Up next is the suspension of the rules for six B filing and/or 12A referral of resolutions. Requires a two-thirds majority vote. We have several items that were pending prior committees. And I have a motion from Watson, second from Larson.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to zero.
So up next is 03-0717. It's a Finance, and you're going to have to give me what they were here, approving purchase of animal impound services agreement for the impound care, treatment, and/or humane disposal of non-dog strays taken into custody by law enforcement or humane officers between the Humane Society of Marathon County and the City of Wausau from January 1, 2025 through December 31 of 2025. And I'm looking for the vote, it was four to one on that. So with a motion from Hanky, second from Watson, seeing no questions?
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to zero.
Up next, file 02-1217. It's a joint resolution from Finance and Human Resources approving bargaining agreement between the City of Wausau and Wausau Fighter Fighters Association Local 415, the International Firefighters AFL-CIO, and CLE for January 1, 2025 through December 31, 2027.
That was five to zero.
It was five to zero in both Finance and HR. Motion from Watson, second from Hanky. Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Has this agreement been approved by the membership?
I think the short answer is yes, but here we go.
It is, yes. I didn't know if I needed to stay up there, but yeah, it has been. Local 415 met on it, they had a vote between the membership, so.
And they approved it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Seeing nothing further.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to zero.
Up next, file 24-1209 is another joint resolution from HR and Finance. A resolution proposal to change the hiring process and minimum requirements for Wausau Fire Department applicants. So just to confirm, we did forward that by both. Okay. Vote on that was, we did have one dissenter on that, if I saw that right.
I'm not sure how it passed by.
Chairs, help us out. Four one in HR.
It was four one in HR.
Yeah.
There were two of us that didn't vote for it in HR. She voted for it last night, so it was four one. Yeah. Four to one in HR yesterday.
And I think it was three two in Finance, so.
Okay, so we have a motion from Rasmussen, second from Hanky, and Rasm, Alder Rasmussen.
Thank you. I'm excited about this program. This is, what we find is that public safety departments, fire, fire and EMS specifically statewide, really are all competing for talent. They all are struggling to find staffing. I think what they're seeing is that whether it's a reluctance to enter the field, or whether it's just a slow flow into the field, the retirements are outpacing the people entering that field of work. It's a professional field of work, but it's a dangerous field as well. I think that as a recruitment and retention tool, the ability for us to attract new applicants and then help train them up and then complete their educational hours with our department, much like CSOs in the police department, this kind of gives us a chance, it gives the candidates a chance to see our departments, which over the last, I'd say, 10 years, has really become a destination department for people to work and build careers. It wasn't always that, but it also gives them, the department, a chance to look at those candidates and know how they are and whether or not that relationship can be built upon. And so, you know, I think if they're able to bring people in at that basic level, help them get trained, you know, we've also talked about at some point down the line an apprenticeship type program. All of those things give them an advantage, a competitive advantage in that competition for quality talent. So this is really a great step for them, and I hope we'll support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Alder Martins.
Yeah, just, yeah, exactly what Lisa said there, Alder Rasmussen. This program is much like an apprenticeship program we would find in, in the trades, and what it, what it does is it gives a fire department the opportunity to hire individuals that may not have the paramedic certification or are not currently enrolled in paramedic training. As long as they've, they've got their firefighter and EMT certification, they can come on board. They're given a, an early benefit, a bonus to, to pay their tuition for paramedic school. That's almost a year-long program, and while they are in class to be a paramedic, they're also a firefighter with the, with the City of Wausau, they'll be riding along on med calls and get valuable on the job training while they are furthering their education to get their paramedic certification, which at the end of this program, we will have a better-trained firefighter, a better-trained paramedic. They'll know how, and it's going to be, it's going to be a total win-win for, I believe, for the city. So I am excited to see how this, this program works, and I hope it's going to be a great success.
Thank you, Mr. Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My only question, I have a couple of questions, actually, and this would be a budget neutral or not?
So the apprenticeship program that we proposed was specifically designed to not be an increase in cost. We took what normally we hired, a first-year firefighter with their EMT basic, and we took that yearly salary and adjusted it to provide the tuition credit and the early engagement benefit. So, and then being able to hire them as an EMT basic, that's a 6% less rate than a firefighter with a paramedic licensure. So it should have a net zero fiscal impact.
Okay, and my second question would be, thank you, but my second question would be, is once this, say, this person is fully trained, is there going to be some kind of contract language, whereas since we've put him through all this training, him, him or her, through all this training, is there going to be some kind of contract clause where you must remain with us for five, say, I'm just using this, say, for five years, you know, before you, you can move on? I mean, I don't want this just to be something where it's a, where it's a training program and they all of a sudden say, thank you and goodbye.
Mm-hmm.
You know, thank you.
Yeah, and that's exactly why we created that early engagement benefit to, and it would have similar language than some of the current firefighter paramedics had to agree to upon, upon hire, that they would be responsible for reimbursing that early engagement benefit if they discontinued their employment within three years.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Nothing further.
You may begin voting. Motion passes nine to one.
All right, up next is 921135. It's a Finance Resolution approving a joint powers agreement with Marathon County regarding the E911 and NG911 system, and that was pending Finance. Looking at, Mr. Martins.
Five to zero.
Five to zero, that passed. Okay, we have a motion from Rasmussen, second from Watson, seeing no comments.
You may begin voting. Motion passes 10 to zero.
Up next is a closed session from ED. It's file number, two, two file numbers?
Two, three, 1109.
Two, three, 1109. Standby, I'm going to get clarification.
This is the joint resolution that we're pulling, because we didn't actually approve.
Just a clarification, didn't the committees not take that up? So if it hasn't been to committees, should we postpone as well?
I, I think you're right, and that's what we're discussing. I think you're right, and that's what we're discussing.
I think they decided to wait.
Yeah, it was tabled in committee.
So just, that's the next agenda, but we're pulling it because it didn't approve committees.
Okay, so then there's one yet we still do, or no?
We just announced that and then go into closed session, do the closed session item.
I'm really confused, I'm sorry.
Because we amended the agenda yesterday?
Okay, so we had an.
We added an item to the agenda yesterday, file 231109. It was a joint item from finance and HR. Neither committee took that up at their joint meeting tonight, so we pulled from the agenda because it did not pass at committee level, so then we can move on to the next item.
Okay, okay, and I don't think I have mine updated here, that's my problem. Okay, so then we have a closed session item, a separate one from ED, that we discussed the purchase of tax lien property. So I would look for someone to read the closed session on that one.
I'll read this.
Mr. Martins.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant to 19.85 paragraph 1 sub E of the Wisconsin statutes for deliberating or negotiating the purchase of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session relating to approval of purchasing properties taken by Marathon County due to foreclosure of tax liens.
Motion from Martin, second from Watson.
I will call the roll in reverse order. Henke?
Hi.
Larson?
Hi.
Tierney?
Hi.
Watson?
Hi.
Rasmussen?
Hi.
McElany?
Hi.
Gisselman?
Hi.
Neil?
Hi.
Killian?
Hi.
Martins?
Hi.
Motion passes 10 to zero.
Okay, we will have to come back to adjourn and any public comment if there's any, but it shouldn't be long.
Motion passes 10 to zero. I did say that, I did say that.